Well, good evening. I'm Greg Ferris, President of the Board of Trustees, and welcome to -- glad you joined us tonight. It is now 7 o'clock PM and we reconvene back into regular open session. This time, we're going to start with our invocation, but let me read a bio of our guest tonight. Mr. Nate King, Executive Pastor of Lake Point Church. Nate and his wife Heather met at the Heights Church upon his return to Garland, Texas, from serving four years in the Marines. They've been married for 17 years and have three children who attend Forney schools, ages 14, 12, and 11. Nate earned his bachelor's and master's degrees in ministry. Eight years ago, he joined Lake Point staff and has been living out his passion by developing leaders and communities through groups as a group pastor. In September of 2021, Nate transitioned to Lake Point Church Forney as the pastor of ministries. He and his wife moved here to Forney in December and are excited about being part of our Forney family. Lake Point has adopted Warren Middle School as its partner campus. They provide support by backpacks and Angel Tree programs. Lake Point Church is always willing to help out in the district and provide others in need. We're thankful for Lake Point and want to welcome you to our Forney family. Let's rise for prayer.
Thank you so much. Forward and to everyone here, parents, families. Appreciate so much this opportunity to open us up in prayer. So let us pray. God, we thank you so much for this time and this opportunity. We pray that there would be wisdom. We pray for unity and building and peace, that we would work together, that we would be able to move forward in the things that you have for us. God, I pray that this would be the time that we are able to just accomplish many things that we all have to say, that we're moving in the same direction. The gases unite.
And moving on to our pledges. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Brenda Lopez, Principal from Rhodes Intermediate, and Ms. Kristi Crabtree, Principal of Griffin Elementary, as they'll introduce our Students of the Month.
Oh, just wanted to make sure it was on. Well, good evening. I'm Brenda Lopez. I'm the principal for Rhodes Intermediate. I am so excited to be here to acknowledge Sebastian Velazquez. He's our first ever Rhodes Raptor of the month. Since we're a brand new school, he is our first student ever to be acknowledged here. So that is very exciting. I reached out to his teachers and I don't know why I'm getting emotional, Sebastian, but for them to share some great things about Sebastian, and this is what they've said. Sebastian is one of the kindest students you will find at Rhodes. Made obvious by the way he is seen interacting with students and teachers alike. I have yet to see what he looks like without a smile. It must be the hormones. When asked a question or given instructions, he always responds with "yes, sir" or "no, sir." Not only is he respectful, but he is also extremely helpful. You can always find Sebastian trying to help his peers. We are so grateful to have such a kind-hearted Raptor at Rhodes.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Crabtree. I'm the principal at Griffin Elementary, and I'd like to introduce to you Sarah Lauren. And she is our very first student of the month for Griffin Elementary. And Sarah's the daughter of Steven and Jennifer Lauren and is a fourth grader at Griffin. When asked about her by her teacher, this is what Ms. Crabtree had to say about Sarah. Sarah's such a joy to have in class this year. She is an enthusiastic learner who pushes herself to do well, pays attention to detail, and works diligently. She sets an example of excellence in behavior and cooperation. Sarah loves to help in the classroom with any tasks given, reading aloud, helping a student sit near her, passing out papers, and so much more. She's also a library helper in the afternoon and loves the day she is able to go read to kindergarten students. Sarah's so much more than just a great student. She's also a good friend, too. She helps others when in need. She's kind and compassionate. She includes others when working in groups of playing at recess. Sarah personifies the mission of Griffin Elementary. Grizzlies strive to have a positive culture that encourages the growth of all stakeholders. I could talk about her for hours, and we just adore Sarah. And I want to leave you with this thought. If you are a cat lover, Sarah is your girl.
Will you rise for our pledges, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Congratulations. We're going to have you guys. Congratulations. Your family here. Principal, family, and one. We're going to move on then to item four, recognition. Starting with student recognition, at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Ms. Jenny Glanton, Coordinator for Fine Arts, to share some announcements with us.
Good evening. My name is Janay Glanton, and I'm delighted to be here this evening to honor our TDEA All-State Dancer. The Texas Dance Educators Association All-State Dance Team is comprised of dancers representing schools from across the state of Texas. All-state dancers participate in an exciting convention experience that includes dance workshops, leadership training, master classes, and networking with other students. The All-State Dance Team Experience culminates in a performance choreographed by a master choreographer. Each school is allowed to bring one All-State dancer. And in January of 2022, Alexis Thompson from North Forney High School participated in this All-State Dance Team performance. This performance was conducted at the state conference closing ceremonies in front of hundreds of dance educators and administrators from across the state. Alexis was one of 250 students chosen to participate in this event. Alexis was able to network several college dance programs and teams. And at the end of the event, Alexis was offered an audition for a spot on a national championship college dance team. We look forward to seeing which school she chooses to attend to further her dance career. Congratulations to Alexis Thompson for representing North Forney High School and Forney ISD as a TDEA All-State Dancer.
Alexis could not make it this evening, but we'll make sure that she gets her certificate. So let's give her one more round of applause.
And we'll move on to item two, our All-State Vase Group. Mr. Lariel Luna, Director of Fine Arts.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry and board. Yes, sir. We are here to recognize our state vase recognitions. And what this is, is a visual art event recognizing exemplary high school students' artwork at the state level. This recognition represents the pinnacle of artistic success in the vase program. The state Visual Arts Scholastic Event is the highlight of all vase events. So our first one from Forney High School is Addison Cherry. And her art teacher is Ms. Barinsky, and she will come up and stand with her. And then we will... And then we have five students advancing from North Forney. You're the boss. You tell me. And then I'm going to ask Ms. Holliday to come up here real quick, because I've practiced some of these names, but I do not want to mess them up. Side note also, Ms. Holliday here, this is your third year with us. She is actually our region vase coordinator, so basically director. So she is in charge of all the vase entries. And all her paperwork she gave me, there was 1,456 art entries that she was in charge of. We've not done a in-person vase yet because the two that she's been under her have been virtual, which I'm sure is probably even harder. But just, yeah, but just want to give a shout out to her. We have five artists from North Forney. Some are not here tonight because, like students, we have an event at North Forney happening right now, and they can't be in two places at once. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Ms. Holliday so she can read these names. Or, okay, I'll read them, but, okay. I know Mark. So Mark Noriega. If you remember the video we did on him last year, he was our gold seal, which a gold seal is like extremely hard to get. So hopefully... Our very first one from North Forney. So hopefully, after the vase event in April, we will find out how his piece does. Angelina Espuchera. Is that right? Close? She said no. What about Linien Abu Sakiri? Leon? I tried to pass the mic over. I tried. For real. I did practice today, but... Holly Elliott. She's in the program tonight. Just could not make it. Thank you. And our last one from North Forney is Grace Leninski. She's also in the program. So, awesome. Okay. Ms. Kyle, can you come up, too? She is one of our art teachers at North Forney. And these students go compete April, the 28th and 29th, next month, and in April. So here we go.
Thank you very much, Fine Arts Team. We'll move on now to Coach O. She has some introductions about swim and dive state qualifiers.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Dr. Terry and the board. It is a privilege to present to you the student athletes that participated in the UIL State Swim and Dive Championships in Austin earlier this month. First, I would like to recognize Head Coach Jason Thompson. Coach, if you want to come on up. We have divers from North Forney High School. Cory Jarrett, first-year diving state qualifier, finished 24th this year. Micah Smith, two-time state qualifier, finished 20th this year. Divers from Forney High School, Maddie Belabradic, three-time state qualifier, finished 17th this year and was... There's more. She was also the first alternate for the finals. Maddie was also a district and region champion. Bryce Benson, three-time state qualifier, finished 16th this year and was a state finalist. Bryce is also a district champion. Please join me one more time in congratulating these outstanding student athletes and coaches on their achievements.
Moving on to item B then. We're moved to Staff Recognitions. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Kristen Zastepal to come and introduce our next awards.
Hello. Thank you for letting us present this evening. Each year, our school communications department submits awards to the Texas School Public Relations Association. I am so proud of our team. We have won Star Awards every year for the last four years and beyond. And this year, we took home quite a few different awards. And so I'm here to share those this evening and recognize our team. So we took home Best of Category and Gold Star in Writing. We took home four Gold Stars for all of our new logos last year. And then we took home several video awards. We had a total of three Gold Stars, a Silver Star, two Best of Categories. And then Juan Hernandez, our videographer, was actually able to enter a Crystal Award for a video portfolio, which is samples of all of his work together, and they judge a whole body of work. And he actually received a Crystal Commendation Certificate of Merit for that. So I'm so proud of our team. They've just taken these incredible marketing ideas and run with them, and it certainly takes a village. So we have all of our team here tonight. Susan Johnson and Dana Curry, who's with us. Talana Morris in the background. Larry, as you know, who's behind the camera. Juan, who is back there. Hernandez, where's Larry? Oh, Larry's sitting up here. Sorry. He's usually back there. Juan Hernandez, our videographer. And also, in addition to celebrating these awards, we are celebrating a new addition to our Forney family in that Juan welcomed his second son on Friday afternoon. So we have a new baby to the family.
At this time, we'll move on to item number five, Texas Academic Performance Report, our annual public hearing. May I have a motion to call this public hearing to order? Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. This time, I'll turn the microphone over to Dr. Judy Weber, Chief of Learner Services.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, and school board members, and Dr. Terry. This report will be a little bit different than it has in the past because of some gaps in data. But I wanted to take the opportunity to present some data that we've looked at kind of for the past last few years, compare us to the region and the state, and then project even into this next coming year and kind of where we're predicting our data to fall so that you guys are aware of some of the challenges we're facing and some of the things we're doing to mitigate the challenges. So once again, this is our regular annual performance hearing. And so some of the changes that came about due to the gap in data is TEA did not issue accountability ratings for the 2020-21 school year. So therefore, there's some slides you'll see later in the slides that show that we didn't receive some accreditation statuses or that they didn't give out certain kind of things they normally do because of the gap in data. One thing the state really made very clear is that the data will not be used for state or federal accountability purposes. We went into the STAR test a year ago fully believing that it was just going to be a data point, the data would not be used for anything. And then the state really changed their mind coming out of legislation on some of the things that we're having to do because of other measures put in place that they did, in fact, use the data. They went ahead and published and shared the data with us. So basically, we went into a test thinking it wasn't going to count, and then it actually did. But it does give us a starting point, which is very important for us to look at, to measure ourselves moving into this year. So we are thankful for that. So of course, our county ratings are not rated disaster for all of our schools. And then we'll have data this next year showing up for Griffin, Rhodes, and Jackson. But once again, it'll be a bit incomplete since they don't have historical data. So our MAP assessment, our Common Assessment that comes out of Northwest Evaluation Association predicted back in 2020 that we would see some significant COVID slides. And they predicted it'd be really significant in our younger grades. And that has really held true because some of our younger students, say, the third and fourth graders, they really missed information learning that came out of first and second grade. And so our students that were really beyond eighth grade, we actually did not see much of a slide. If you already are a proficient reader, you still could handle those high school assessments because you already have those foundational skills. So the state did provide some really interesting data. They published a fairly lengthy report they shared with us. And they said the 2020 gap in data, and then what happened last year with the large number of students being remote, is that it erased years and years of school improvement. So this is state data showing how every year the state improved and improved and improved in accountability. And then it didn't just really slide like that. There was no data point for 2020. So we went into 2021 with the last data from our campuses being in 2019. And so you can really see the subject that took the greatest hit is math. Because if you missed potentially quite a bit of math from staying home the last quarter of the year 2020, you had some significant math gaps. So I have this data, kind of in numeric data for you guys. And you can see in the full taper report, every level, approaches, meets, and masters, did take a dip both in reading and math. However, when we graph our data, you can see that we are reading scores and our math scores were well above state. I've got the lines in there showing you where the region and state were. We were doing really great. And in 2019, we were an A district. We were really looking at having some of the highest scores that Forney's ever delivered in 2020 based on our March benchmark. We were an A district, but we were looking to even surpass that. And then when the COVID gap, we went home all of a sudden for three weeks, and it was another three weeks, and we never returned to school, and that test was canceled. We actually didn't get the data, like I indicated on that COVID no-data bar. But we were really anticipating some great data. And then we went into 2021, like I said, fully expecting that to not count. And I think that really impacted some of our scores we saw. But we took the same dip that the state did. Now, I've got the... They're kind of small, but I've got some dots in there showing you where the region and state data was. However, what's really great about having these data points is it all is kind of relative. Because just looking at this initial data and thinking, wow, we really took a terrible dip in 2021, the next few slides will start to explain how did we do compared to Region 10 and the state. So a couple of things were eliminated I won't be able to report on tonight. And that's obviously progress-growth measures because without the 2020 data point, they can't do a progress measure. However, growth measures return in 2022. So we're really heavily relying on how does each student compare to last year's data. Another thing that was eliminated was the SSI, the repeat test for fifth and eighth, and those no longer exist. It's good and bad. The students don't have to retake it, but we also can't recapture scores from fifth and eighth graders who may have been that one or two questions away from passing. And with a bit more remediation, they get that second opportunity. They get that third opportunity. Those are eliminated. So for our fifth and eighth graders, it's a one-shot deal for how they do on a state assessment. So here's how we compare to Region 10 and the state. And you can see for every single subject at approaches, we surpass the region and we surpass the state levels in how we're formed, except for social studies. We dug into that data. It came from our eighth graders. It was their fourth test that week. They took the assessment. And anecdotally, we found out that they rushed pretty much through that test because by the fourth test on the fourth day, they thought it didn't count. And the high school students did very well on their test. But in our other subjects, the reading and math, especially the subjects that we have to test year after year, every year, the reading and math scores came out. And we were very pleased with the number of kids who approached in reading and math. And then we look at the meets grade level, which is very important. And I kind of merged all the subjects together for all of our tests. But you can see, once again, at our meets grade level, reading, math, writing, science, once again, above our region and above state with that social studies test. Once again, it came out, the eighth-grade students, day four, live and learn on that one. Really need to pump them up when they get to their fourth test this year. But it kind of puts into context that data on that first graph that showed such a large dip due to COVID. And yet, we still came out better than our region and the state in many of our tests, especially the tests that have a yearly test that we have to assess over and over again. So I thought I would share some data on how our virtual students did compared to our face-to-face. The state finally released that data to us. And this is not normally in the taper report, but I think it has some value because we put in some things in place last year. And I think it really impacted how well we did with our remote learners. So this is the state data. It's part of that big report they gave us. Overall, in Texas, putting all the tests together, remote students performed lower on the STAR test than the kids who were in school. Well, if you could look at our approaches and meets, it approaches our in-person students. We had 71% approach. And for remote, we were really, really close. We were at 70% for our kids who were at home. And when you look at the meets grade level, our meets levels, there's really not that much of a dip in our students who were remote, who stayed home for over 50% of the year. We did have a drop in mastery, but I think that's the hardest one to learn on your own is to get that perfect score or near-perfect score because they weren't there for the day-to-day instruction or some of the remediation opportunities. When we look at our ELR scores, we had something really kind of exciting happen, and that was our students in remote actually outperformed our face-to-face students. And we have some data that indicates why. And so I think that's a real success of some of our curricular programs that when students are home, that they still had the same opportunities and actually did well on the test. And then, once again, at the mastery level, that's the hardest one to do well on if you've not been in face-to-face instruction. So what we actually did last year is we took our learning specialist team. They weren't out on campuses. And they went up to the room right above us, and they created lessons across the board, videos, teach pieces. And the whole district went on a very tight scope and sequence. We used the same assignments. We had the same grading standards. We gave the same assessments. And so basically, they wrote a math and ELR curricular program in detail so that our students at home, our virtual teachers, had the same resources as a face-to-face teacher. And I think that really attributed to the lack of a drop in our data. It worked very well in ELR. It obviously was still a challenge in math. If a kid is home, it is very, very difficult to learn some of the math skills, especially in those younger grades once you're at home, if you're in those foundational grades. I'm very thankful for our district, for Dr. Terry's leadership, and for the school board to be a one-to-one district because that facilitated this curriculum process that we put in place because we had the devices for a kid, whether they were at home or whether they were sitting in our classes. So those kind of systems really helped us kind of survive the COVID, really, disaster that could have been. And yet, we still came out better than our peers. So when we put it into a summary, all in all, we really held strong with our processes and our learning at approaches, meets, and masters. But once again, this data gives us a starting point with what we'll do and what we've been doing this year to fill in the gaps that do exist. So moving forward. House Bill 4545 did require some accelerated instruction, and we have really dug into this and have more kind of accelerated instructional groups going on than we've ever had before because we're required to by law. But it was what's right for kids, to take every kid with a gap and then find the ways to fill in those gaps. And then we've been assessing that with multiple assessment points. We're taking a very important one this week with the interim assessment to get that next data point, to look at how effective our processes have been. So moving forward, we do have a lot more small group intervention. We've added some learning loss staff to really help our students who are significantly behind. We've got learning check data we monitor, our MAP universal screen here. And we've been taking... We've been using the interim assessment been taking, we've been using the interim assessment that STAR has provided, because you get on-time, immediate data on a STAR-like assessment. And so that's providing some invaluable data. And then we've been having quite a few targeted campus data meetings. So each campus knows where I stand as a campus, where do we stand with each student, and what is our process moving forward. Well, we'll ramp up our summer programs this year that will fulfill House Bill 4545 also. But by using the interim data, we can already start predicting what kind and what types of summer school programs do we need to offer for the kids who still have significant gaps, especially in math. So predicting moving forward, we've got the data. It's just going to start coming in. We'll spend spring break really evaluating the data. We hope to see a nice rebound in reading. Once again, once a student is a proficient reading reader, the test is just basically the comprehension of the reading skills. With math, we think it's going to take us a little longer to get, move back up to where we were in those great 2019 scores and where we were headed or where we were going to be in 2020, because we now have to catch up with some kids a year and a half gap. And so as the math content keeps becoming more challenging, if they have a math gap from, you know, an earlier grade, it's really difficult and more challenging to backfill. But I'll be able to really predict that line I put there at 2022 in the next few weeks when our interim data comes in. And that gives us the big push of what to do and what to concentrate on between this moment and when we lock in our STAR data in May. So there's other data in the taper report we typically share with you guys, and district mobility is one that we frequently monitor. The state does put our campuses into look-alike groups of 40 campuses based on low SES, the number of English language learners, and then the mobility percentage. And you can see we've got a couple really, really high bars and high campuses that face high mobility. But without showing you what their group of 40 average is, we've got some campuses that are now outliers compared to their peers. They're at an average level with their peers for low SES students. But when we layer on what the average is for certain campuses, you can see that Blackburn, Lewis, Henderson, Johnson, Smith, Brown, North, they start becoming outliers, and they're much higher than their group of 40, which means we have much higher mobility rates than our look-alike campuses for many of our campuses. And we know this puts some challenges on our campuses. When new students, we bring them in, they still love them, they still teach them, but if they've got some significant gaps, then they have some extra work to do to fill in some of the gaps as students continually move in. Grad rate, we're still doing well there compared to district, region, and state. And attendance rate, most of the campuses around the state are very high, and you can see we're still much better than on attendance rate. And then post-secondary readiness, one of our strongest areas where we have been incredibly successful was the CTE coherent sequence graduates, and that was where we really shined as a district, because we have such strong CTE programs. That is no longer allowable as a post-secondary readiness measure. They took that away. And we'd even petitioned and asked for them to keep that. So now we're going to have, we'll work on those other areas to try to improve those data points so that we come out really strong in college and career readiness. And then, of course, you can see for accountability rating, that's one of those not-rated disaster. And yet for financial rating systems, we're an A, superior district. And then if you look at, again, this no accreditation, things weren't allowable because we were non-rated. So that's standard across the whole state. And then moving on to other data points, we have to always report our violent and criminal incidences, and they did not take a significant increase. Some areas went down actually to zero for this year. But for our violence prevention and intervention policies, I'm going to have to change the font so it'll be so small it'll be not readable, because we keep adding programs to work with our students. And this, we have strong district-wide CKH restorative practices. A lot of school safety measures have been put in place by Rick Gere and some of his team, and then with Tina and Robin and some of the guidance programs going on. So we continue to add layers of prevention and student support in areas of just behavior management, basically. And then for our Safe and Drug Free School and Community Act programs, once again, we continually add some things. I want to highlight a couple I underlined, and that was the weekly Caption Kids Hearts lessons, starting at all of our elementaries. And then the fifth through eight in real-life classes and the impact they're having on students and their social, emotional skills and their prep for the future. And so this list also continues to grow on the programs that we add to help our students become well-rounded and really able to have the systems to support them, both academically and in the social, emotional world. So that's kind of our data in a nutshell. We are really watching the next data point come in. It'll come in this week, and then we will have a plan for moving into STAR season. So I know there's some gaps in the data, but at this time, are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Weber. Do I have any additional questions from the board?
I'd just like to say, it takes a lot of work to go through all that, and Dr. Weber does a great job during the year, going through and seeing this, I want to talk about this one, and then coming up with solutions.
Good question. On the college ready, don't you have a look at all of that comparatively? Is there, is that, I mean, is it including that?
They look at a lot of different measures, such as how many students take certification tests. Well, we were, had a pathway where our kids were in the coherent sequence. It used to count for us and count equally to say a certification test. After we submitted all our data, they no counted that. They also do not, also count students entering the military. Once again, you get your real finalized accountability handbook and what you're held accountable to after you've already submitted all of your data. In fact, you don't find your group of 40 and how they even compare you till after all the data's in. And so we're working on all those other measures to make sure we do have our kids meeting the measures, getting the tick marks they need for the college readiness, and whether it's taking the certain number of AP courses, dual-credit courses, or obtaining certain scores on TSIA, or getting certain certifications. So we've got measures in place to remedy that. We did. They took, they eliminated the one thing that Forney has really, really excelled in, and that was making sure all of our kids had a clear pathway. And then they don't
Ms. Ferris, if I can, just add one thing. I just wanted to say, big appreciation to our staff. You know, over the last few years, learning has been a huge challenge, whether it's in a virtual setting or a face-to-face setting, or students that are taking 10 days off for certain reasons, and then coming back in and trying to reintegrate into the learning setting. I've just got to say, to see this data and understand that it is relative, and we all knew that the COVID slide was going to be a reality. It's been a reality nationwide. But I've just got to stop and say thank you to the staff and the teachers and the principals, some of them in the audience, that have continued to work hard each and every day. Whoever showed up, whoever was there, they gave their all. They continue to put learning at the forefront, and I just have to say thank you for that. Also, just a couple things too, when it comes to our virtual learning programs, I've got to commend our staff as well on this. To be able to flip our school district into a virtual learning setting and have one of the top virtual learning curriculums in the state, we were actually asked to be a part of a TEA program to kind of study and model what virtual learning would look like, and the data that we produced is actually being studied throughout the state as well. So just wanted to commend our team for what they did, especially our learning specialist team. They had to shift their role overnight as well to develop some of this curriculum. And I think the proof is in the pudding when it shows that our kids at home and onsite perform virtually in a common area. So mobility is something I also would like to just, to take a second to comment on. When you're in a fast-growth district, in a district that is literally experiencing unprecedented fast growth, the challenges that our staff face each and every day with the kids coming in, I think you can see there's a layered difference as to the number of new students that we do receive and have to catch up in certain areas and integrate in and acclimate into the way we do things here in Forney. And making sure that they're being successful even in a short amount of time, I think is notable to point out as well. So more than anything, Ms. Ferris and board, I'd just like to take two seconds to say thanks to our staff, because it's been a challenge in few years, and they're still pushing forward to try and do everything in the kit to ensure that our kids are being successful in the classroom.
Are there any further questions from the board? Thank you, Dr. Weber, for always breaking it down for us. I'd like to ask a motion from the board to close this public hearing.
Mr. Ferris, I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. It is now closed at 7:40 PM. Moving on then to reports, number seven. The next two items are reports only. We'll start with Mr. John Chase, monthly financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. We're here not to discuss the operating results through January 2022. It's kind of hard to say that these days. I catch myself sometimes still riding 21. But just to start off with, with the general fund revenues, year-to-date revenue collected was $90.1 million, and that's 70% of the amount appropriated or estimated. And as compared to last year, we were at 62%. And just like last month, we believe that the timing of our tax collections had the reason why there's an 8% variance there. January 31st is actually on Monday this year, and that extra day, as you know, January is a heavy tax collection month. That's when our taxes go to Lincoln after that day. So there's a large volume of collections that they're processing at the end of the month. So fully expect by the time February ends, when we present this report to you next month, that those percentages will be fairly closer in line. Moving on to expenditures in the general fund, we spent $79.1 million, or 57% of the amount appropriated. And last year, again, for comparative purposes, we're at 53%. We're about 4% ahead of where we were last year, primarily for the same reason last month. We were funding a capital project, Aquatic Center, out of our general fund this year, and we've got a lot of capital expenditures that we didn't have last year. So that 4% variance is why we have the percent that you see there. But, you know, seven months into our year, you know, 7/12th is about 58%, so we're at 57% right now. So we're in still pretty good shape overall. Moving on to food service, year-to-date revenue collected was $3.6 million. That's 67% of the amount estimated. This month, we had $641,000 of federal reimbursements for our free lunch program that we're operating this year. We also served 112,000 meals, lunches this month, which is fairly in line with where we have served in the prior months, when we had a full month of service. Our a la carte sales were $113,000 for this past month as well. And for comparative purposes, last year, we were at 27%. And again, that was a COVID year, but certainly we're well ahead of where we were from that. We're in really good shape in our food service program. As far as expenditures go, year-to-date, we are at $3.1 million, or 58% of the amount appropriated. And again, prior year, we were at 43%, but it's hard to compare this year to last year because of the coronavirus. As far as debt service, we had $29.4 million collected at the end of January. That's 89% of the amount estimated. And again, for the same reason, the general fund, we were, prior year, we were at 78%. So that 9% variance was a timing issue with our tax collections, and that will be straightened out, I believe, at the end of February when we get our February report. Expenditures, we didn't really have a whole lot of activity. It's pretty much the same as it was last month, $20.9 million year-to-date. That's 69% of the budget, and the prior year we were at 73%. We will, next month, have, on February 15th, we had some pretty large interest payments on our bonds outstanding. And so our expenditures in our debt service fund will be about 100% expended when you get this report next month. Finally, the cash investments that were on hand at the end of January were totaled $168 million. Of that, about $58 million was related to our capital project program. And that's the financial report for the month. If you have any questions, we'd have to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Good job, as always. Any questions from the board? I hear none. Thank you very much. We'll move on then to item B, master planning update. Ms. Kim Warzac, chief operations officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Board, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Von Gallagher from Gallagher Construction to come up and give you guys an update on all of our current projects. You know, the weather was not great last week, and so slowed some things down, but they're making great progress. The buildings are just looking absolutely beautiful, starting to look like buildings we were able to walk, Ms. Branch around Willet, so she could see the progress that's happening there. And I think she's excited now that she can tell. I brought her a couple of months ago, and it was just mud. She's not the mud kind, and so I think she's excited. Everything's almost in the dry. So, Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you.
I'll try to do my best to fill in for Jeff tonight, so I'll give you the run-through on the projects. First project is Aquatic Center. It's moving along well. The structure itself has been the process that we've had. It was the one that was selected to make the most economical facility. So it showed up. It's in process. We've got everything right behind it as they move along. The crews that they've sent down from New Jersey have been great to deal with. They're a little slower than we would like, but everything's right behind them. So we've got all our provisions in place that we've got. So all that's moving them well. Should be a lot of activity that happens there this week to really start taking shape. Questions on that facility? The North Forney Fieldhouse and baseball softball field, it's in the finishing stages. Done punch list, still doing some punch list. We're doing the cleanup, the final cleaning inside, trying to get the outside cleaned up as well as the landscape done. Big shout-out to the staff, the coaches, the kids. We've been an inconvenience for them since we've been there. They've been wonderful to deal with, trying to get them to practice and back and have workers around and how to fence things off and between cut lines and different things and just things that happen throughout the process, they've been great. And I just can't thank them enough for the way they've approached all that. So hopefully here with the next 60 days, we'll be out of the way on this phase, and then the rest of the phase will take place this summer once school's out. We do the interior renovations where we replace all of this. Johnson and Willet, they're both moving along well. We're a little ahead of where we were with the last elementary school. That was in the same shape. Interior finish outs taking place. We've got cabinets going in, painting happening inside. The outside is just about wrapped up with the masonry and those kind of things. Won't be long now, and the landscape will be started, and the outside will start to finish once the weather changes a little bit. But we're just moving right through that facility with the painters and the cabinet, the tile, and getting those things done. Working both projects at once has been a benefit. We've got some trades on both, some split that we didn't think could handle the resources. All that's worked out well. You know, we get a lot of stories when you're selecting that, oh, we can do it, we can do it. But I think all that's worked out very well. So I think it's also proven to be that we've got a vast array of different trades, different contractors on the same trades, as we move through using this same prototype to help with the bids as we go. So that's working out very well. Any questions on those? And then finally, on the OC, if you have gone by there, you'll see the big peer drilling machines, auger cast piles. There's four of those out there underway with that process. The excavation's about complete. The grade beams and structural concrete are underway. The utilities are out. There's a lot of activity taking place out there. There's a lot of activity taking place behind the scenes as well. We're working with Huckabee, you know, to get steel shop drawings approved, to get our steel delivery, our roof material. We're trying to get all the things that are in supply chain issues right now. So while you see that amount of work taking place onsite, there's as much activity happening behind the scenes. And I think the process is going really well. We've worked through trying to alleviate together, you know, the long process of approving things, to shorten them up, and conference calls, and that's going well. So that's the first phase that's taking place. We'll bring the next phase tonight, later on, for approval. And then the third phase is going to bid here, yeah, 22nd. So that's kind of where that is. Any questions on any of the projects?
What's the target completion for the Aquatic Center?
The 15th of April.
4/15?
Mm-hmm.
And then on Johnson and Willet, was there any supply chain issues on those that have them ready for?
No, we're good. We encountered some roofing material issues early on, but we were able to overcome those about 90 days ago. So at this point in time, we don't think so. We're checking with everybody. Kind of our last big delivery is the food service equipment, but we think all that's good. But we think all that's good. And we've got a lot of repetition there. So we were able to order all that early on. So I think we're good on all those.
Not wanted by roof for OC or OC?
Yes, yes. So that was one of the reasons that it was an early bid phase for that exact reason. Because if I said I wasn't worried, I would be lying.
Right.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Appreciate all you do and your team in keeping us on track.
Thank you.
Press on. Moving on to item eight, public forum. At this time, nobody signed up to speak to the board. We'll move on to item nine, consent agenda. 9A is approve the minutes from the February 7th meeting. 9B is approve minutes from February 17th meeting. 9C is approve the budget amendment. 9D is approve the missed school waiver. 9E is approve the purchase of staff Chromebooks. 9F approve the revised resolution for SHAC. 9G, statement of impact forms for charter schools. You can see in your packet more information there. The board may take action on each of these separately or collectively. Do I have a motion? President Ferris may motionally approve the consent agenda collectively. Mr. Andrews, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on, item 10. Consideration possible approval of the school mascot for Willett Elementary School. I'll turn the microphone over to Ms. Kristen Estes.
Hello. You have a memo in your board book where we conducted a survey with students who were zoned to Willett Elementary for Fall 2022. So we opened that up for about two weeks. And by majority vote, the students and their families actually selected the Willett Wranglers as their mascot. And we were able to actually go ahead and have our graphic designer put together a logo. So tonight, we present the logo along with the mascot and the school colors for consideration for your approval.
I'm sure you can give any comments.
You know, when we started this process, I have to share this one piece of information. Our namesake Judge Willett, I think he called and he said, you know what I think would be a really good mascot? The Wranglers. And so we put that in the pot for the kids to vote on, and it turned out that they agreed. So it was pretty exciting that he was able to actually participate in the naming of the facility as well. So very excited. We'd recommend approving tonight the colors, logo, and mascot for Willett Elementary School.
Thank you very much. Board, do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that we approve the mascot for Willett Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Green, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? I hear none. Board, I think if you would, join us down front for a photo for this one, please.
And we have the Willett principal, Lori Branch, here for you.
Then we'll move on to item 11. Consideration possible approval of 2223 compensation package. Mr. John Chase will present for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you know, we are beginning usually this time of year, and even sooner than this, trying to plan for next year's budget. And part of that planning process is developing a compensation package for our employees and then also to be able to advertise to potential employees. And with the fact that we've got to hire 300 people this year, and 170, almost 70 of which will be teaching staff, plus, you know, if we have any that leave us, it just add to that number. So we felt it was really important to jump out there right now and to get a compensation package in place. There's been several districts here lately that have been starting to advertise that. And so the market is already starting to heat up and getting really competitive about attracting staff to districts. And so we spent quite a bit of time designing this compensation package. And I'm going to let Kristen kind of go over all the finer details of this. They'll be putting together a marketing plan and so forth with what's included in that and what was presented in the board book. But just as far as the finance part of this goes, you know, normally, we have a budget workshop before we propose a compensation package. But this year, because we're trying to get it out there so quickly, we've got our first job fair at the end of this month. And it just felt like it was really important for us to be able to get that finalized and solidified so we could, you know, possibly get teachers to sign on to us a lot sooner rather than later. Just looking at the revenues for next year and basing our projections on, you know, 2,400 additional students enrolled, we feel like everything that's in this package will be paid for and still have about $2 million or so of padding on this budget in case 2,400 students don't show up. And we can just hold off on that $2 million, wait and see what our enrollment actually looks like in August and September. And then if they actually are all here, then we can pull the trigger on some of these other capital improvement plans that we've got, that we need to do in the district. So the job fair is going to be March 19th. It's on a Saturday. And so, again, we just really feel like that this is something we need to tackle and get approved tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Kristen and let her kind of talk about the finer points of the plan. And then if you guys have any questions about the finances or anything else, I'll be happy to answer them at the end.
So you have in your packet, we kind of put together a compensation package that was really geared toward recruitment and retention to try to keep our great employees here and also get them to recruit their friends to come work for the Fornie family. So with this package, you also have some sample marketing materials at your place that we hope to begin promoting the job fair along with these items in this package, if approved, to help attract new staff and retain our quality staff as well. So you'll see that with these compensation packages, we've given you several scenarios. If it's a first-year teacher, a five-year, a 10-year, a 25-year, where they have the ability to make $10,000 or more extra beyond that base pay, should they really look at some of the, and take advantage of some of these incentives. So our starting new teacher salary, we're looking at making it competitive at $56,000, at least a 3% midpoint pay raise for all staff. So our zero-to-five years, we get an additional $1,800 and our five-to-30 years of teaching experience, an additional $2,100 on their step. One of the big things we heard from our staff as we started to ask for feedback on what they would like to see in order to stay was that a lot of them were mentioning things like help with childcare, help with mental health expenses, things like that. So we got a little bit creative. And so we are looking for eligible employees to opt-in and receive a $600 per year contribution towards either a flexible spending account or a health spending account. This would allow our employees the option to either utilize it for childcare or healthcare or mental health. So this would be for eligible employees to take advantage of that should they choose to. This board has been extremely generous the last six years in approving a 1% retention stipend that is traditionally paid in our November paycheck, right as we get out for Thanksgiving. So we are proposing that we actually pay 1% the first nine weeks, the first quarter, and another 1% the second nine weeks to help recruit and retain staff. In addition, our Friends and Family Plan, we feel like this could be really successful this year. Any staff member that recruits someone to come work for the Fornie family and both of them come work for us next year, they have the ability to earn up to $3,000 for recruiting that person. It is paid out a little bit at the beginning of the year, a little bit at the middle of the year, and a little bit at the end to make sure they both stay throughout the year. They do have to stay on for that. So our FACT program as well, we've been promoting that. I spoke with Ms. Rader tonight. I think she said we had like 25 staff members. Some of our paras are starting to really look at that program and take advantage of receiving their bachelor's degree. So there's a lot of interest being shown in that and getting their teacher certification at little or no cost to them. And then high-needs stipends, high-needs stipends for certified teachers, as well as there's a whole lot of additional incentives, the things built in, like we have fall break here. We have a great partnership with Dallas College and Texas Tech that they can take advantage of. The OC is coming on board. So we bulleted out all of those different items in there. But we believe that these are going to be great recruitment and retention tools. And should the board look at this package and decide to approve it, we hope to actually go and present to each of our campuses later this week and get this information in their hands before they head out to spring break. So maybe they can start recruiting Fornie family members while they're on their spring break as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Estes, Dr. Terry, do you have any comments?
You know, this is, I think we're getting really creative this year. Want to speak on a couple of things, if that's okay. First off, there was, just from the financial side of things, we're always looking to ensure we have safety nets in place. And 2,400 students is a lot of students. And so the $2 million that Mr. Chase referenced there is equivalent to about 300 students cushioned on our enrollment once we get to October 31st snapshot. So I want you to make sure that, you know, we've got nets in place again this year. The other thing we did with this package, which I was pretty proud of, we went to our teachers first, talked to them and asked them, you know, what types of things would be a good recruitment and retention even approach this year because it couldn't just all be in salary? Obviously, we know that there's only so much money in the pot. And they understood that, too. They're very aware of that. But they gave us some really great ideas and great feedback. We did the same exercise with our principals, and they were very aligned, which was exciting to see. So what you see here is a really creative approach to trying to not just create a plan to recruit new teachers, but to recruit and retain all staff. Everything from our custodial staff through our teachers, through our administrators. So very proud of what our teams put together this year. The Friends and Family Plan, we think, is going to be a great opportunity for people to go find their friends, true friends, that want to be a part of this district and this family. And usually, that creates retention long-term. So very proud of what we're presenting tonight and ask that the board approve this compensation plan as presented. Be happy to answer any questions you do have.
Thank you. Have any other questions from the board regarding the compensation plan? Yes, go ahead.
That is. We actually, on the calendar that was just adjusted recently, there are actually eight diamond days marked. We shuffle those around a little bit because some principals may choose to use a diamond day on a Tuesday versus a Wednesday. But we are working to build that in to make sure they have those five protected days.
Are they limited on how many of the Friends and Family?
They are not limited. We are starting it for the first 150 positions hired because we did need to set a budget amount that we could work with. But if one person recruits all 150 of those people, then they're going to get a really nice paycheck next year.
But they do have to come back, even with that money.
Yes. They have to, you have to still work here when you bring your friends because you have to receive the money on your paycheck. So you both have to stay.
Any further questions? Well, I appreciate everybody's hard work on this. I know as the board, we challenged you to be creative because we knew retention as well as recruitment were going to be a challenge this year. So thank you for thinking outside the box and coming up with these. Do I have a motion from the board?
I move that we approve the 2022, 2023 compensation package as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Green, and a second by Ms. Dobbs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? I hear none. Moving on to item 12. Consideration possible approval of the resolution to pay employees in the event of a school closure due to inclement weather. Mr. Gere.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. School board, Dr. Terry. Well, as you can, if you remember, we had a few bad weather days here in February. And so obviously, in your board book is a resolution that we are recommending tonight, which sets the purpose for repayment of these employees paying their wages while they were idle. Our goal, obviously, was to ensure that no employee in the district would lose wages as a result of the school closure. Paying these employees serve multiple purposes. It actually maintains morale, it reduces turnover, and it ensures the continuity of when the schools do reopen. So we're bringing that to you tonight as a resolution for us to make sure that anyone that was idle, that did not work during the school closure, would receive their wages. Be glad to entertain any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. We would recommend tonight that you approve the resolution as presented to ensure that our staff doesn't lose anything on their paychecks due to this closure.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion from the board, please?
I make a motion that the board approve the resolution to pay employees in the event of school closure due to inclement weather.
Thank you, Ms. Green. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? I hear none. Moving on to item 13. Consideration possible approval of construction bids. Ms. Morzak?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I'm actually going to ask Von Gallagher from Gallagher Construction to come up and talk to you about Package 1A bids. As you know, Huckabee and Gallagher worked together to kind of phase the OC in so we could get materials that had long me time in early. So Von's going to kind of talk to you through the 1A bids. And then the next board meeting will approve the next package. So Von?
The bids before you, we, again, phased this as we fast-tracked the process. We worked to schedule out with Huckabee so that they could continue drawing on some of the areas. The initial bids that we've already accepted were so we could get the site we're going in the major steel and the main portion of the facility ordered. Tonight is just the second phase of that with some longer lead time items. We've got our elevator in there, the structural concrete that goes on these second areas where the steel was performed, as well as the storm shelter portion of the facility, which is a pre-cast facility. So we've got those bids in. They're pretty straightforward on what they are. We did take an alternate on some additional classrooms. And we've gone ahead and shown that for recommendation tonight. The reason we did that, instead of waiting until Phase 3 bids, is because we wanted to go ahead and lock those numbers in based on the current climate of what things are. Also, with the 25% rule on change orders by the legislature, we need to have that in here now. So those are put in here as an out if we need them. So if we do, when we bring back the next phase to you, then we'll just back those out as a deductible change order. So that's why they're in there. We have all intentions of doing those facilities. But with the climate, we're just trying to be safe on where we are on those things. So it's a good group of contractors. We had one significantly low bid on the pre-cast from Core Lab. We've checked them out. We've gone through the scope. We've done a project with them before. They're definitely capable of doing the job. There was no reason not to use them based on, after going through everything with them and ensuring that they have everything covered. So there was no reason not to take the savings for the district. The one item that we've got the one bid on was on the steel. That's because that's the same group that has the major part of the building. The others kind of backed out because of that. So we did everything that we could to make them think there were more bids than the one that we had. So not shocked by that, but was hoping for a different outcome. But their number checks out based against our estimates, so we're comfortable with where their number is. Any questions I can answer on that? You'll see the global scope of everything and the total and everything once the next phase bids. We have the finish out and all the other items with it. But these are in line with where we were thinking things would be at this time.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Again, want to commend Mr. Gallagher and his team. Again, want to commend Mr. Gallagher and his team, the way they structure these bids. I apologize to the board for bringing in three different phases, but yeah, I promise you their approach ends up saving us dollars in the long run. So thank you for the
Thank you.
many, many alternates that you guys have spent so much time on. So we'd recommend approving the bids as presented.
We appreciate all the hard work and preparation for tonight. Board, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Phase 1A OC construction bids as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? No, here none. Moving on to 14, consideration of possible approval of synchronous and asynchronous virtual learning plan. Ms. Morseak?
Thank you. I'm going to pass this one off too, but I'm going to talk first this time. So as you guys know, Senate Bill 15 allows districts to develop and hold a virtual online school. The law requires districts to cap their virtual enrollment at 10% of the total population of students. We are currently preparing to begin a virtual academy for the 22-23 school year, limited to high school students only. In order to gauge interest in this, we did send out an interest survey to students a couple of weeks ago, and we currently have 63 students who have shown interest and we have 105 parents who have RSVP'd to attend a parent informational night. So we're pretty excited about that. Just to clarify this, we do have other options for virtual for our students. So the virtual, FISD Virtual Academy is for students who choose to be fully virtual and that means they take less than four classes face-to-face. In order to be a full-time student, you have to have four face-to-face classes. We do have other options. All of our dual credit students who take classes online through dual credit count as face-to-face students for us. So that does not count against a virtual student. In addition, we're still going to offer what we call our flex option for students who want to take some classes virtually but come face-to-face for the majority of their day. Stacy Joseph is our Director of Virtual Learning and Media Services and she's going to present to you tonight our virtual learning plan as well as, inform you, excuse me, on our participation in a TEA virtual cohort. Her team's been working really hard with our principals to ensure the success of this program next year. The majority of our delivery for this program will be asynchronous, so students will be able to, they won't have to sign in at a certain time. But we will be asking the board tonight to approve both asynchronous and asynchronous learning plan. That gives us the maximum flexibility to do what's best for our kids as the time arrives for the virtual academy. So this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Stacy Joseph and she'll talk you through our virtual plan currently. Stacy?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Morseak, Dr. Terry, and our School Board members. I am excited that we are going to offer both programs, 440 ISD, both on a synchronous and asynchronous approach. This program, as Ms. Morseak said, will primarily be asynchronous. That'll give us a lot more flexibility with our students and their schedules to help us meet our students and our families' needs as a community. And then the synchronous approach will be offered throughout the semester based on the teacher need and if a class is offered synchronous, it will be recorded and provided to the student if a student was not able to attend. Through Virtual Academy, we will offer two different programs, the first being a flex program, and this is when a student is taking classes both on the campus as well as in a virtual setting at home. A good example would be a student who is in welding and that is the career that they want to go to. They could actually take their core classes at home, but participating in our welding program for our school to grab that certification. A full-time student will take all of their classes through virtual and if we actually have a freshman that enters into the virtual program, they will have the opportunity by the time they graduate to have an endorsement in business. So even a virtual student all the way through can grab an endorsement for our school district. Through this process or the last couple of years as we've been developing this program, I do want to share our mission, which is that our Virtual Academy will partner with families and communities to offer students a rigorous and engaging education. By blending both asynchronous and synchronous instructions, students will receive an education that prepares them for the future-ready skills and knowledge to become lifelong learners. On our vision, the biggest thing for that is that families and students, we want to find flexibility in their learning. How can we meet the student? How can we meet the family where they are? Throughout this program, we were asked by TEA to participate in the virtual and hybrid program accelerator. In this program, we actually partner with TEA Education Elements and we're actually partnered with 27 other school districts across the state of Texas that has already implemented a virtual program this school year, or we will be implementing a virtual program next school year. And this has been a great partnership, allowing us to build the best possible program we can for our school district. And at this time, our applications are open. Our website has every bit of information you need to be able to learn anything you want about Virtual Academy. We have been on campuses, doing campus meetings with our students. Emails and social media has begun to go out and then of course, as Ms. Morseak said, that we will have our first parent meeting tomorrow with us already having over 100 that have signed up to participate.
Just want to thank Stacy and her team and the high school principals really for a lot of hard work to get this together for our kids. At this time, we'll take any questions that you guys have regarding virtual or the virtual cohort.
So with a 10% cap on total population and we're just doing it for high school, or do we still have 1,200 to 1,400 spots open for high school?
Yes, sir. We're going to start with high school. The board determines that they want to open that up to younger grades or if it's just, we're having an overwhelming response, we can look at increasing that the following year or even in the year if we need to. But we're going to start with high school.
Did you say that the students that choose the flex option, that's not counting against the cap?
If they have four or more face-to-face classes, they are not counting against the flex cap and dual credit counts as one of those face-to-face classes. So if a kid's in four dual credit classes, even if they never come to campus, they are a face-to-face student. So that is, it just depends on the way the student decides to go to school.
One more question. Does that, I also said application, the students' previous academic performance, go into that way into that?
So the state put some guidelines in place, but we have more stringent guidelines because the way the state wrote them, all of our students are eligible because you had to be virtual the previous year for those guidelines to fall into place. We don't have any virtual, full-time virtual students this year. So by state law, all of our kids would be eligible next year, but we do have some requirements. We want to make sure our kids are successful. There's also some nets that these guys have put in place, so if a kid's struggling, we'll have tutoring for them. There will be, you know, parent contact and that type of thing. We're not going to let kids flounder and we're not going to let a kid who didn't succeed in face-to-face this year go, you know, to the wayside and disappear on us. So there are a lot of nets in place as well. Dobbs, good question. If there are no other questions, we would recommend that the board approve both asynchronous and asynchronous learning plan for next school year.
Thank you very much. Board, you've heard the presentation. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that we approve the synchronous and asynchronous virtual learning plan as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, here none. Moving on to item 15, consideration of possible approval of the student Chromebook purchase. Mr. John Chase?
As the board's aware, the last, this is our sixth year, I believe, on a Chromebook one-to-one initiative that we instituted six years ago and at that time, we had discussed the need to probably have these on a refresh cycle of about every three years. And so this being the sixth year, it's time to refresh what we have out there. We have purchased some new ones here recently to fill in for some of the growth that we have, but the bulk of the stuff that we need to purchase will be covered with this purchase request. We advertised for bid or proposals in January and we had our proposal opening in February, on February 10th. We received seven responses from seven different vendors and each vendor, there was, some of them gave multiple responses, which you have a summary of all the responses that was included in the background memo that was in the board book. But essentially, the long story short is, is the proposal that we got from Archangel Tablets, which we've used to purchase Chromebooks in the past, was what we ranked as the best value to the district. For 11,000 Chromebooks and 534 classroom carts, the total price would be $2,154,146. Now, nearly all of this will be charged to our federal program, the, one of the ESAR funds, either ESAR III or ESAR supplemental, kind of divided between those two programs. In the past, we've charged about 750,000 a year in the general fund. This year, we appropriated most of that money to purchase those VIVI devices that we put in the classroom to help with the online or the video presentation in the classroom to facilitate that. So, but we knew that this money that we had, we kind of carved this out in our plan to use these ESAR funds for this purchase of these Chromebooks. So anyway, the plan is, again, to continue on with that one-to-one initiative, this would allow us to do that. In grades K through four, our plan is to have these carts in the classroom, so at the end of the day, students could turn those in, they would go into those charging stations and they'd be fully charged and ready to roll when class started the next day. And so our recommendation is, is that the board approve the purchase of Chromebooks from Archangel Tablets as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any further questions from the board? Dr. Terry, do you have anything to add?
No, sir. Just recommend that we approve the Chromebook purchase as presented.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Ferris, I move that we approve the school student Chromebook purchase as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, here none. Moving on to item 16, consideration of possible approval for granting hiring authority to the superintendent through September 12, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As John and Kristin presented the compensation plan earlier, so we're ready to start hiring. We're ready to go. And so as we have done in the past years, we've asked the board to grant the hiring authority to our superintendent, Dr. Terry, because as we go through this, we need to make sure that we're able to move quickly on potential good hires, especially in a fast-growth district with, as y'all approved, 299 positions last month. We're ready to go. And so tonight, we're asking that you grant him hiring authority through September the 12th of 2022.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry?
Just as a reminder to the board, we will always bring back gratifications for your review as well and adoption at the next board meeting, but do appreciate the trust that you put into our staff to hire the best employees and teachers for our kids. So I recommend approval of granting the hiring authority of the superintendent through September 12, 2022.
Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to grant hiring authority to the superintendent through September 12, 2022.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, here none. Moving on to item 17, closed session. At this time, the board will enter into closed session. We'll move into closed session in Texas Government Code 551074, Texas Government Code 551072, Texas Government Code 5571071, and Texas Government Code 551071. And I'll call this into closed session at 8:24 PM. It's 9:28. We'll call this back into open session here at item number 18, consideration of possible approval regarding the employment of professional contract personnel. May I have a motion, please?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the rapid case of employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, here none. Moving on to item 19, consideration of possible approval of reemployment of professional contract personnel. May I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the rapid case of possible approval of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrews, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, here none. Board, please make note there, the dates listed below in the future meetings, other announcements. Any other questions or things to cover before we're gone? Dr. Terry?
No, just do take note of the two ribbon cuttings, March 18th and March 24th, I believe. We've got those set and so we'd love to have everyone out for those events and then the foundation night as well. We made sure to include that.
Okay, yep. Education Foundation fundraisers, so check that out.
I think it's going to sell seven of them today.
I bet you can do it now. You can order them today if you want to.
Tables for sure. I know that we don't have tables.
All right. Okay, it's now 9:29 PM and this meeting is adjourned.